Okay, should we get started?
All right.
To order, would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. So let's dive right into the May financial report. Rich? If you could turn on your microphone so we could all hear.
Not a lot to report, except that we're in our 11th, this is our, was our 11th month of our 12-month fiscal year. We had received 106% of our operating revenue and spent about 80% of our budgeted. The reason we got 106% of our operating revenue is if you look at the line item for our interest income, when we budgeted in February of '21, the interest rates were like 0.5%. We're now getting 5% to 6%. So we had a huge windfall of interest income, which is one of the big reasons why we're, we've got more operating revenue than we thought we would have. And that's it, really. There's no outstanding, nothing significantly outstanding.
Any questions? No, thank you. So the, our TAM manager was unable, is unable to make tonight's meeting. He had a medical procedure today, but I believe Dave, you'll, you'll be able to, in his stead, give the manager's report.
Sure, happy to help out. I guess this is a report of just some of the things that we've been working on, you know, sort of outside of our standard policies and practices that we do on an ongoing basis. We attended a stormwater kickoff meeting for the Corso project to go over a very basic plan with county DPS officials, just to sort of figure out where they are in the process and I guess, sort of figure out going forward how that will, will be managed. We attended the biweekly team call of the Bethesda Market Park Development Project. We've continued to hopefully get through the planning stages for the Coquelin Run Project and the Zimmerman Park Project. For the Coquelin Run, I know we'd said that we'd gotten approval from the Maryland MDE to proceed with that project. They sent us an email last week saying that they actually had kicked it to the Army Corps of Engineers because it needs a review because there's a new long-eared bat that has been declared a at-risk species. So we have forwarded it over to them and haven't heard back from them, but we'll give you an update on how long that review might take once we, once we hear. I talked to Jason about it. He said that this has happened before and typically it's just a cursory three or four-week turnaround time. But we emailed them immediately when we received the notice from MDE. And as far as I know, we have not gotten an email back from them yet, so we need to follow up and see what the delay is related to that. Zimmerman Park, we're working on developing the WSSC easements that are required. We're still waiting to hear back from Park and Planning about our forest conservation review, and we still haven't heard back from SHA about the right-of-way permit that we need for those, but we will follow up and hopefully all those will, will come through in, in short order. We received and distributed the Rosemary Triangle Survey and publicized the Walkinare for the Fall to review the existing conditions of the park and to solicit resident feedback on possible enhancements to the park. We met with MDE officials regarding the lack of flow in the Coquelin Run and submitted an initial set of questions for review. We launched the new town website, which, you know, has been a little bit, long time in the making, but that is up and running and seems like it's being well-received and working the way it should. We scheduled a June 21 council work session to discuss gas-powered leaf blowers. We began the second phase of the town office improvements. Over the last two weeks, we've done some concrete work for some spot repairs that residents have requested or things that we've noticed. And also more comprehensive repairs on Aspen Street between Meadow and Connecticut, and also made some sidewalk repairs along Connecticut. So that, that work is done. While that contractor is mobilized, we got permission from the county to go ahead and proceed with the installation of the two storm drain inlets, one on Maple and one on Oak Ridge. So the contractor is doing some test pitting in the street to identify the exact locations of some of the utilities, just to make sure that the plans that the county developed will work. And once those utilities are located, they should be able to proceed with the installation of that in pretty short order. That concludes the manager's report.
Yes, please.
Yes. With all the concrete work, what, what's the schedule for paving this summer? Just refresh my memories on the streets.
So for paving this summer, we're planning to pave Oak Ridge, just south south of Thorn Apple.
Right.
And we're planning to also pave Aspen Street. So those are the two streets that will be ready to pave once the storm drain inlets are installed. WSSC is planning to begin their water main replacement on Leland Street and Thorn Apple Street, both between Meadow and Connecticut, probably in July or August. So once that work is done, we'll do concrete work on those streets and those will be, should be ready to pave along with Meadow Lake next year.
Okay, so that'll happen in summer of 2024 for Meadow Lake.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Dave. When do you think the inlets, the repairs to the inlets will be done?
The repairs to the existing inlets?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the Maple and the Oak Ridge.
The, the new installations, it depends on what they find when they do the test pitting. The county is giving the contractor permission to, to do the work. So it sort of depends on what they find and how quickly they can schedule it, but I think it should be happening pretty quickly.
Any questions? Sorry, I had some questions for you.
No.
Because of just what Joy just brought up, is it worthwhile or was there a plan to communicate with the residents that are living straight around those new stormwater improvements? Because it's been such a, a big issue, at least last year. Well, is there going to be communication from the town just saying, look, this is the latest or this is what they've found when you have a better idea of the schedule or?
Yeah, I mean, certainly before we do any work, you know, we'll notify the people in the immediate vicinity of the plans. And I don't know if we should notify all of the people in the Thorn Apple some to let the, I mean, I think they're all aware that I think the inlets are going to be installed. So I think they'll see them, but I can certainly reach out directly and let them know, you know, once we have a schedule.
Awesome. Also for Corso in terms of the manager's report, so I just wanted to make it public that on July 25, there's going to be a community meeting where the, the developer will, will come and provide information to the town with respect to the traffic studies, the parking studies and any kind of stormwater updates that are, that are needed at that point or information to that point. This is a part of the process that's needed because we obviously are a stakeholder, but just want to kind of make it public to the masses out here that are six people. July, July 25 will be the date and obviously it will be publicly announced to town criers and forecast and all of that. As a part of that, because there's just some questions around what happens when, or just the assumption that maybe residents might be wondering what, what happens after that. I have asked that some sort of schedule range of time be, be prepared for the council so at least we can understand what's coming down the pike and be a little bit more proactive as things come up rather than.
In regard to the Corso schedule.
Regarding the Corso schedule, exactly. Another thing I wanted to mention is that next week's, next week we were to have a work session to specifically discuss the gas-powered leaf blower potential band, ban and what that would look like. That's been postponed to July 19, but I'm asking our, our colleagues to keep next week open in case Bethesda Market Park needs to be discussed, which will be discussed later. Another item I just wanted to bring folks, there's a number of, the, the town staff had brought about ideas forth based on the data where potential LED signs might be placed around town. Believe three sets of letters went out to effective neighbors and two areas were totally fine, but there's one that, that, that there's some discussion amongst the residents and that's the, at the corner of Leland and Oak. So what we've asked is that the residents themselves get together to talk, to come to a, you know, whatever that might be. It's not the only opportunity to get an LED sign. Even if it's a year from now and people have, you know, decided that they want to go forward with it, then certainly town staff can respond accordingly as soon as a petition is turned in. And that's all that I had unless some other.
I mean, can I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
How, um, what zone of people around Leland and Oak are getting that notification and how are they being notified that they should talk amongst themselves?
So, well, there, there are a couple of ways. So the, the, when the intersection has been identified, it's the number of, I think, 13 houses around the area. It's like three houses up, three houses over.
Yeah, it's the corner house at each leg of the intersection and then the two adjoining houses along each street.
Yeah, so it wasn't everyone along Leland. Yeah. Then how are they being notified by letter as well? That's going to go out at some point soon to just, I've seen a draft of it. I think it's, it's ready to go out. I think if it hasn't already.
Yeah, I think it has gone.
Oh, it has gone. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So now we're in the public comments area. So if it has, not, not to do with the variance hearings, but if anyone has any other public comments to make, we invite you to come to the podium or if you're online, feel free to. I don't see anyone online. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Okay, so I guess now we'll start with our variance hearings. So Ron, if you would like to introduce, thank you.
Sure, happy to do so. The first hearing tonight is the Gerlach variance regarding 4004 Underwood Street. A staff report has been entered into the record. The town has received three letters regarding the request and those were entered into the record. Dave, have there been any more since the staff report was prepared?
There have not been anymore. No.
Thank you. So the hearing will begin with a presentation of the case by the applicant. Is Mr. Petri Antonio, sorry, here to speak on this case?
I'm here to speak.
The variance that the, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here to speak as to the variance that's been applied for by the Loves. Not, not on the Underwood property.
Okay. Is Ms. Gerlach here or anyone?
Yes, she's in the room.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so the case will begin with presentation by the applicant. Please step up to the podium. When you begin, please note that the council has had the opportunity to review the application in advance. So you don't need to restate everything in the application, but please feel free to address what you would like. After that, there's the opportunity for the council to ask questions. After that, anyone else attending the hearing who'd like to make a comment or ask questions will have the opportunity to do so. Then the applicant will have the brief opportunity for rebuttal. The record will close and the council will entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision, either approving or denying the request. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Gerlach.
Thanks. I guess I should have written notes. I wasn't sure I had to prepare anything. I originally applied for variance because I, when I built my house 13 years ago and put a retaining wall and a fence in, the, it was allowed to be close to the property line. And I understand Dave was going to tell me the exact date, but in 2012 or 13, the rules changed and the, and a rear retaining wall has to be two feet in. And if I were to put the wall two feet in, it would impact my stormwater retention tank and four trees in the backyard. So it was approved. So I proceeded to have the wall built and I have to follow in my sword. I measured the, the wall myself and I measured incorrectly. So the wall is built with the natural slope of the, of my yard, which is not flat. It goes sort of toward the Langs yard and the Pfeffer yard in between the Langs yard. And so it's, it's built so that on my yard, there's a natural swale. There's a French drain and with rocks and pipe to keep the water on my property. The whole point is to keep the water from going to the neighbor's property, which is what basically destroyed the timber wall that was there originally and the fence and causes a great deal of problem for the Thorn Apple Underwood neighbors. Really from Connecticut Avenue down, we have a river back there. So we've been trying for years to get together to fix that. So this was my attempt to fix at least my part of the wall. So I, I made a mistake in terms of the measurement, but when you've looked at the pictures that are submitted, it's not a cinder block higher than it needs to be to keep the water and the soil and the trees on the property. So I'm asking for this second variance because of my error. And, but again, it's, I have a permit to build a wall and a six, you know, fence totaling six and a half feet. I'm not putting a fence up. I don't need to put a fence up. The dog died, which is why I had a fence in the first place. So, but I do need the wall to keep the, the dirt and the trees and the water where it's supposed to be. So that's the, that's the purpose. So that's all, unless you have, you have questions for me.
Is that the next, sorry, Ron, is that the next?
Yes, council questions.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Gerlach?
I, I had, when I looked at your drawings, I noticed in your wall, there were a number of outlets coming out of your wall. Are those seepage outlets or are those actually connected to a drain?
There's just, they're just seepage outlets. The drain, all of my downspouts go into the stormwater. I have a stormwater tank in the front and in the back and they all go into that.
And so in the outlet on that back tank, there's an outlet on the back tank when it overflows? Where would?
It's, I guess it stays in the yard.
Now, there's an inlet there that I guess has the timbers now that if the tank fills up, it should search.
Sort of comes back out.
Oh, it never has, but yeah, I guess.
Yeah, you've been lucky.
I keep it clean. I've had a, the pump guy come down and, you know, pump it out and.
So it's, those are, those are seepage outlets.
I guess if that, yeah, is that what it's?
Not drain outlets.
Yes.
That can be placed usually at the base of a wall.
Right, that's what those two, you asked me about those. That's what those are. They're, yeah.
Well, when I, yeah, the, the reason I question them, they're high and they're big.
Right, right. So there's a, there's a, there's gravel in the corners and then bigger rocks on top of one and just dirt on top of the other. And so that's just for overflow drainage.
So that's like a French drain. So those drains are going, they're collecting the water off the surface, going into those outlets and coming out on your neighbor's yard.
Well, otherwise they'll go over the wall to the, I mean, they, they were before going, it was going, it was just all going into the neighbor's yard. So I think at this, the idea of this is that it's going to go more slowly. And then with, since there's a drain to slow the water down going west, you know, hopefully it, I mean, certainly if it doesn't solve the problem, you know, as Dave Schaeffler said in his letter, we have a cordial relationship. We're trying to work this out. The neighbors, new neighbors at 4006 have recently now cleaned out their drain, which was full of dirt from my property because with the wall, you know, failing, the, the soil from my property was getting swept into that. And then that was causing water going into the Langs basement at the next house over. So, you know, it's been a, it's been a battle. I mean, water's, you know, the enemy of houses and that's.
Yeah, and the, one of the other, one of the comments that one of the residents made was you had put dirt on the other side of the wall and essentially he had a swale there that was channeling water and now it's not channeling the water. It's being eroded. Is that correct?
He actually said that the, that there was drainage from the pipes coming that was eroding the swale already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't had any rain, so we haven't actually had anything come through there. But I, I know what he's talking about and that's, that's actually on my property because the, the wall is not on the line. It's about four or five inches inside the property line. Because before, and as I sort of originally was picturing, I needed space to have posts to hold the fence. So it's technically on my side. If he wants it, you know, cleared out, I'm happy to do that. It's not, you know, the idea was that, that there should be a swale on my side and a swale down there so that we all keep it. I mean, most, a lot of the water comes down their yard because they, they have the, the, a big angle, you know, toward the issue. So, so I, I'm, I'm trying to do whatever I can do to, you know, preserve my trees, my yard and not, I don't want to be a problem for the neighbors, the opposite.
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Thank, no, 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 not finished.
We still have more questions.
You have a question? Okay.
I think I was here at the time you asked for the variance in January and I think you appeared online. So I'm glad you're here in person. It's just easier to have.
Oh, no, I know.
The, the, I, I think it's helpful, I'm going to say that, say this as a preamble to separate the underlying quest for the variance, which the council readily gave, for the unanimous vote back in January. Recognizing that, I think we didn't really focus so much on the drainage issues, as I recall. We focused on your request to have the retaining wall back against the back of your property. Tonight's, by the way, the first time I realized that it's not quite all the way in the back. It's five or six inches short of that, but anyway. I had to save the trees and we also find, that makes sense. There's no problem about that. But I do have some follow-up questions for, about substance, but I also have some about process that I'd like to review. Substance, I just want to make sure, maybe this, I was, maybe this was in the application, but I, perhaps I missed it. But is it, is it the judgment, your judgment, but also I can ask, ask Dave, that the effect of all the work you've done is actually going to diminish the flow of water from your backyard into the swale that's on Mr. Shipton's property?
That's, that's the idea. That's my hope.
Would you concur with that, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, there's a tremendous drainage area that drains through the back of David Shipton's property. I think that all of the runoff from Kristen's property before the wall was built, you know, from, you know, that rear yard, all drains through there. I don't know what the impact of those two drainage pipes is as far as it's not increasing the water, but sometimes you get a point source of discharge that can lead to erosion that doesn't exist when you have surface flow.
Okay, but as a matter of the total flow, in turn, because previously, for example, without, where there's no, was it no French drain? So the gutter, water coming down through the gutters just flowed through the soil and went into the swale before? Or was there any, was there any system that held back any of the water previously?
Dry well in the back that takes all of the surface water.
And was there before? Okay, okay, so that's not new.
It's a new house. It's built in 2013. So I had, I had the required.
There's nothing, all right. So I'm, I'm still trying.
This possibly being impounded by the wall and then percolating through into these drain pipes is probably off the pre-existing driveway. There's a patio in the back that does not have water collection. And so it's things that land on those surfaces plus the yard that probably would collect the waters. Now, that probably just ran underneath the fence before.
Well, and also there are, there are rocks around the patio to diminish the water flow. And then at the end of what was the original garage, there's a pervious, what are those things called? The blocks, pavers, where the, the hill comes down, you know, the yard goes slight slopes down into it. And so that takes up a lot of the water as well. So, I mean, it was, it was kind of designed to not.
The new work that you've just completed is distinct from what was put in at the time the house was built.
The, no, the new work should, should add to it.
I'm trying to focus on the new work.
Right, because the downspouts don't go in, they go into the dry well. They always have.
Thank you. Okay, but I still understand, understanding that is still your view and is that there should be some further diminution, some, some degree of reduction of the water into the swale arising from this project?
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Correct.
Second set of questions I really have to do with, with process. I was mayor at the time when Dave reported to me that, that there was a problem that your wall was higher than had been allowed by the variance. And the, correct me if you have a different view, but my understanding was that there was an understanding that Dave permitted you to continue the work provided that you promptly sent a application for this further variance so that we could hear it in May, which would have been more timely. But we didn't receive it at that time.
Right.
Can you talk about that? Why did we not receive the variant request?
Get it to you in May because I was busy and I, I would have been, believe me, this has been bothering me. I would have much rather gotten it to you in May, but I didn't have time to do it. So.
Did not have the time to fill out the variance application.
Look, I've been consulting with people. I've been, you know, taking pictures, getting copies, you know, getting them to you, discussing with Dave, trying to talk to my back, you know, yard neighbor who was in the hospital, you know, his wife was in the hospital. So, you know, I wasn't able to talk to him. So there wasn't, was nothing other than, you know, the date came upon me quicker than I thought because I didn't realize that he had to have the stuff so many days so he could put notices out. So, you know, I just, I missed that deadline and that's the only reason.
Okay.
I really honestly, I want this over with.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I realize you, you mentioned Mr. Schipler has had a spouse in the hospital or something.
He's okay. I understand. She's okay. Yes.
But he's not here to represent his side of the story and I, you know, I am concerned. You know, we, I think when, you know, when we grant the variances, you know, we're trying to be reasonable and also enable people to enjoy their properties without, and as you said also, without, you know, causing any damage to the enjoyment of neighboring properties. And I'm, you know, somewhat concerned about these, these drainage outlets that kind of let out over his property. And I don't know if you can speak to why they go there as opposed to draining out through, you know, the, the infrastructure that you have in your own property.
I think it's just gravity. I, you know, and, and if you look along sort of the, the, the joint property lines of, of Thorn Apple and Underwood, everybody has downspouts that all, they all point there. The Schiplers have two, the Murphy Mediches have several. The, I don't know their names, but the new people next to the Schiplers, you know, everybody has downspouts and they all point them away from their houses. It's just, you know, I, I think they could bury them and it might help the problem. It certainly would help my, but this isn't about that, you know, but, you know, if they buried their downspouts or even cut them back a little bit, I think it would help if they cleared the bamboo debris that's causing like a bed. I think the water on their property would absorb more, but you know, we're, that's a whole other, you know, that's a getting together to solve the problem meeting, not this meeting. So I honestly, if I, I will do whatever, you know, is recommended, but I've, I've had people who, I've had an architect look at it. I've had a builder look at it. My landscape contractor who did the work, I think, did a very good job of, it cost me $10,300 to do this wall. I didn't just slap up a wall. I parched it inside and out. I put those drains that you can't, you know, the, the French drain along the wall so that it would not cause a problem. I don't, I don't want to, you know, be that neighbor. So, you know, I've been in Chevy Chase for 40 years, so not in the town, but in the, you know, zip code. And, you know, it's important to me not to cause a problem. And I would, I thought they would, if he wasn't here, he may be at his house in Maine where he is most of the summer. But I thought he would be here or be online to discuss, but he, he can't see the wall from his house. You know, there's, there, there's all this bamboo. So unless you walk through the bamboo and, you know, stand in the, sort of in the river, you can't see the wall. and, you know, stand in the, sort of in the river, you can't see the wall. So, and it's nicely parched with a stone cap. So, you know, I did my best to do a nice job of it.
Um, Dave, can I ask you, um, about those downspouts that come out, you know, against the wall? I don't know if there's any other remedy there, and again, I'm, again, because Mr. Shippler isn't here, I'm just concerned about, um, you know, what other remedy could be provided to him on his property?
Because they are so close to his property, um, I don't know what remedy there is without doing work on his property. You know, like I said, typically if you have a pipe that's discharging water, it can lead to erosion. Um, I know with the fill that was installed behind the wall, you know, that needs to be stabilized, you know, with some kind of rock or gravel, um, which would probably take care of both the erosion and the, from the pipes and also, you know, stabilize that, that drainage swale. But, you know, installing those improvements would require his consent or permission, so he would need to.
That's what was recommended by my, the landscape contractor was, he was using his hands to show like, rocks this size put, but, you know, between the properties in there would also slow the water down. So, and I, I think the Shipplers are willing to, you know, they, he, he and I have been the ones, you know, sort of, and, and the lings spearheading getting this problem fixed, so, you know, he's on board for fixing it, so. And, you know, again, I'll do what needs to be done, but I'd, I'd rather not do something that would cause the, the wall to, you know, lose its integrity. And I think most retaining walls have weep holes in them.
Dave, in the, in the original submission, did, um, was there, did it show that these, that that was a French drain there leading into those pipes? Do you know?
No, because I, I didn't know. I didn't know, it didn't, it didn't.
So.
That's why we didn't talk about drainage in January, we didn't know about any of the drainage issues.
Well, that's why I was asking if he saw them on, on the, the original submission. Okay, so, is my understanding that, that, that drain, that French drain was in there when you put the new wall in? So it was constructed with the new wall?
Correct. Yeah.
And then you, and at the time you, you constructed it, you, you don't, you're not sure if it's, of, you know what, a French, a French drain is, a drain that simply collects water and lets it out. A seepage, the seepage comes down and then just seeps out those holes to keep the wall from failing. So that, those holes in there are from a French drain on your property, right?
I don't think so. I think the, the drain goes to their, their rocks at the corner.
Yeah, that, those, that would be a French drain. If it's rocks with a pipe coming out of it through the wall, that's a type of a French drain.
I mean, if, otherwise the water will just stay in the, in the rocks or flow over the, the wall.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess it's gonna, it's gonna go one way or the other, it's either gonna go to the Pfeffer property or to the Shippler, I mean, water's gonna go where it's gonna go. And the, the geography of the lot is that it flows that way, so. And this was intended to slow it down so that it has a chance to not cause damage.
Joy, do you have any more questions? Stephanie, do you have more, do you have any questions? You don't? Okay. So I just have some clarification questions, uh, thank you for hearing us out here. So, when the original plans were drawn, did you go over them with Mr. Shippler?
No.
Uh, you read his letter and he, he, he proposes actually sealing off those, they're, they're not weepage, they're, they're drainage. Have you spoken to him since that letter was, uh, prepared?
No.
Do you have anything to say with respect to?
No, I'll, I mean, if that's what needs to be done, I'll do it again, but I, I'd rather not do something, I, I want to comply with, with whatever solution we can come up with that works for everybody.
Right, so you, you talk about compliance, but when, when it was originally brought to your attention that this was higher than what the town, the previous town council had approved, it, I, it may, please let me know if I'm misrepresenting this, you went ahead with the work even though there was some questions?
See, that's what's, there are some things in that letter that make it sound like I was like sneaking around at night putting this wall up and I was not. The wall was almost completely done. The only thing, I mean, and Dave even told me, don't even do landscaping, um, but the sod had already been delivered to put down. So, you know, it, it, it was after it was already almost 100% finished that he had a complaint about it. And again, the measurement now is different from the measurement when there was all this debris when the original wall was there, because of all the dirt and the bamboo leaves and stuff that had collected behind there, so.
Right, but what I'm trying to get at is because the process wasn't followed, now we, the neighbors are grieved. I understand you guys get along and thank goodness you get along, but there is this, from, from our standpoint, there, there's this, uh, position of, wait, I don't know why this water's coming into the swale and I don't, I definitely didn't agree to have dirt put, you know, two feet onto my property.
Well, it's not, it's, it's on my property. The dirt, the dirt he's talking about is on my property.
Because of the, the wall was recessed.
Dave thought the wall was this, Dave, thought the wall was on the property line and Dave Shippler says zero in his letter, which is not accurate, it's less than zero.
Okay, so.
So, yeah.
Or dirt, to say.
Yeah, it's my, it's my dirt, I'm happy to remove it if it makes him happy.
It's, it's, so the swale was always your land?
That, no, the swale is big, the swale on, on that side is big, so it's, it encompasses mine and his.
Yes, you share that, yes, but it goes two feet into his property, the, the dirt, uh, that was the infill soil, no?
No. It's a couple inches, yeah.
Sorry?
It's a couple inches, yeah. Joe came over and looked at it today.
How do you know, Joe, what, what, you, you know this land well? Okay. Okay, so I'll go to Dave.
There's stakes and, and markers from.
So I'll go to Dave, how much of, of Mr. Shippler's land is being covered by this infill soil?
But I think this is improper according.
Mm-hmm.
The, you know, it's offset from the face of the wall by four inches probably.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And I took a look, it looked to me like the fill soils were.
That's a couple feet.
Yeah, no, no, this, the, the, the dirt that was new, this was, this was when it was, before the dirt was down. The, the dirt that was new is just.
I, I saw fresh soil that extended from the face of the wall, probably two and a half feet.
But there was a lot of dirt back there that was moved around, so it's.
It looked to me like it was fresh soil that I saw of it.
I, well, I just wasn't, I'm trying to go, because all we have is Mr. Shippler's letter that, that, that suggests that, look, it's gone onto my property, I didn't know that this was going to happen, and then the same thing happens with these drainage, um, the, the drainage pipes.
That's why, yeah, I wish, I wish you guys could have come to look at it, because it's easier to see it in, uh, in person.
Well, and Mr. Shippler isn't here either, so, uh, so I guess I'm, um.
If, if more dirt is taken, it, I don't think, I think it's gonna cause more problem because then the water won't continue to go to the next drain, which has then been cleared out. Do you follow what I'm saying? Water has to, the water has to keep going downhill.
Yeah, I, personally, I just finished a drainage project on, on my property and, dirt's the last thing that was put down, it had to be, uh, river stone. Uh, so, it, because one, when we finally do have a, a major storm, all that dirt just gets pushed.
Right.
So why did the landscaper think that dirt should have been put into that swale? Did, did you guys?
I don't think they put it in the swale, I, there was a lot of dirt there that was disturbed from taking out the old wall, a lot of my dirt fell, a lot of that dirt fell down from the yard. So there was a lot of cleanup, there had been also, you know, I have pictures of before, stacks and stacks of, you know, old bamboo pieces and stuff that just, you know, it's sort of just been thrown back there. So a lot of cleanup was done and a lot of, you know how they, they come around and they try to clean the thing up? It was not intended to cause, uh, a negative and it can't on, to his property, because his property goes very steeply uphill. So.
No, I'm thinking of down, from whoever's down of, of that property, not even the, sorry?
It's downhill, Al's, Al's down.
And the dirt will never. No, you'll, you'll get, we'll get to, uh, we'll get to you in a bit. Um, so, uh, another question, uh, right now, your intention is not to have a fence put on top of the retaining wall?
Right.
Do you anticipate a time when there will need to be a fence of any sort? Okay. Um, it's, it's quite unfortunate that the process went as it did, uh, because it's just not the way that we, nobody likes this kind of situation, you know, we live in a very densified area, it's good that you've reached out to the neighbors, but obviously one feels aggrieved at this point, um, and we're trying to figure out what we can do with respect to the variance that you're coming today and then also try and bring everyone together. At this point, do, do my colleagues feel that we have all the information that we need?
I don't have any more questions, I think that's all we can establish.
Right, do, do you?
There'll be more commentary before.
Of course, yeah, but at, at this point, do you feel like you have information to, right now? Okay. Um, okay, thank you for that. Sorry, Ron, what is the next part in the process? If anyone else has any questions for the applicant, right? Is that?
Public comments, yes.
Okay. So, please, sir, uh, if you, if you would, yes, if you have any comments or? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I, I'm sorry, I'm Al Ang, uh, Al Ang at, uh, Underwood Street, two houses down from, Kristen. I, I've lived here for 43 years and I don't want this to sound like I'm immodest, but you guys have no idea how much water we're talking about.
How much what?
Water, we're talking about. Water starts at the top of Connecticut, comes down between the two streets, Thornapple and Underwood, between the houses and the back, there's a swale back there which starts when two houses up. So before that, you can't get to that because there's a pipe that brings the water there, flows off of Dave's property through the bamboo, because his property is much higher, right? 90% of the water comes from either upstream or from Dave Shippler's property. You can go to Dave Shippler's property after a rainstorm, after a week and a half later, and there's water coming out of the ground. So there's tons of water. If I were to estimate this, you got 95% of the water coming from other places rather than coming out of those little holes. So the little holes aren't gonna add to this issue, they're not gonna touch the issue. That swale has been there for a long, long time, it's to pick up the water, but unfortunately it dies two houses down, right where my property is. So the water then flows down this swale, across the properties, across, um, Kristen's neighbor, that's further down, and then right into my yard, right? So when I looked at this wall, I thought it's almost a no-brainer for me, because I think it makes it better, whether there's a French drain or not, because that's not where the water's coming from. Uh, I think it makes it better, it makes the directional flow better. You could, if you wanted to, put little directional pipes on the pipe coming out to have it point downhill away from Dave Shippler's property. I mean, it wouldn't have much of an effect, but that's what you could do. The wall is as high as it is because the land is about two inches lower than the wall. So it had to be that, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna talk process, but I'm just saying, if it's not that high, then it would be below the land that's the property line, right? And then if you looked at the whole area, you would see this, in fact, Dave's been out there many times with us over the years working on this problem. And that swale can fill up and roll over the sides back up to the wall and up to the other side of the property. So that's, that's the fact of life. Been here for 43 years, not gonna change, this is not gonna have one effect on that whatsoever. Uh, as, as Kristen said, every one of my upstream neighbors has got pipes that come right into the swale. And again, I don't really mind that because that's not where most of the water comes from. So from my perspective as a neighbor, I'm not aggrieved, I think it looks good. Uh, you can't really see it from Dave's house at all, because as, as Kristen described, there's nothing but bamboo back there, and that's another piece of the problem, I guess, because all of that leaves come flowing down to, guess where? Which, we've lived with it for a long time, so, um, and we still love the town, by the way. But it's amazing, I had, I had Todd come out there one time because he didn't believe me and the water was up to about.
Here across my backyard. Just flowing across the.
So I, I honestly, I understand the importance of process, I'm not belittling that, that's for you guys to decide, not for me anymore. I understand that, I really do, but this is not a significant issue or a significant contributor to what's going on, it really isn't. And I, I'm fully supportive of the way it looks, it's attractive. Uh, and I think if, if Kristen's willing not to do another six, whatever she could do, four or five foot fence, that's a plus as well for Dave too. I don't know if there's any questions for me or not, probably not.
Thank you.
Sure. Joe Rubin, friend, neighbor, uh, we're comparing notes here, uh, 44 years, 44 years. We're gonna throw down on this. I, I went to Kristen's house this afternoon and looked at it and, um.
Joe, for the record, you're not, your name and address?
Joe Rubin, 4131 Leland. I was, I was trying to figure out the pre-construction grade where this whole thing started, because to me it was a replacement of an existing wall. So then we started talking about code and if the code did not grandfather that in, not enough it speaks to rear walls, but it certainly speaks to front walls, um, that, they, they are allowed to be replaced and if they're not changed in terms of, uh, setback or height, height from their original construction. So I looked at Kristen's property and I looked at four mature trees that were left behind there, and that to me was pre-existing grade on her property. Then I looked at Shipley's property, which I had never seen before, and I looked at the natural contours of, of the lot, especially where it came into, came into the wall, came into the swale, which is not really a swale, it's just pretty much crashes into that wall, which is probably what helped to undermine that wall and release all the soil.
Oh, I mean, the previous fence that was there.
Well, no, there's a timber wall there.
There was a timber wall, and there was also a timber wall.
Which had, which had rotted out.
Thank you.
Which had rotted out, so all the topsoil was being lost over the top, I don't know what was being lost in the bottom. So to me, I saw a replacement there and then I looked at the contours of Mr. Shipley's yard and I don't think that's fresh dirt down there, I think that's, I think that's, uh, original soil that was unearthed, that was, that was exposed when they dredged out all the muck and all the stuff that had fallen through from Kristen's failing timber wall. That was my observation, because it does follow the natural contours of, of his, of his land. I don't really see an appreciable change here, I, I just don't. I can't speak to process at all, I know that's unfortunate. I got trapped in one of those situations myself about 15 years ago, not for a client of mine, not me. So, all in all, I think it, I think it really benefits the situation. The, uh, the dirt that's down there is a swell about this wide and maybe extends two or three inches up above the wall, it doesn't need to be there, you can break that out with one hand and let the wall act as the backside of the swale, it's a solid masonry wall. I still considered, my understanding was those were weep holes at, at the base of the wall, but even if they're not, there are many ways to handle that, including putting them in a hard pipe and taking it past the property. It's the same amount of water, it's gonna flow somewhere anyway, either over the wall or under the wall. So if it's that much of an issue, then let, let Kristen get a permit from Mr. Shipley to go on his property and, and case in a four inch pipe, take it away. Meanwhile, I will point out that Mr. Shipley has his downspout straining right into that as well, you're pointed directly at Kristen's house. So. So. I support the applicant on this one.
Thank you. Dave, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make? More, more than what was in our packet?
This picture is the prior to, or the prior, this is the fence. At the point it was being. Oh, my heavens. You really keep records from a long time ago.
I'm sorry, what was this?
That is pictures of water flowing past Kristen's property, along David Shipley's property. Also in two thousand eight, but that's been a longstanding. Issue with water flowing between the properties since I worked for the town. Here's just that they got the top ground. What the circle of the red is the green area. So all of the area inside of the, so that that's the gray is through the rear of those properties and through down.
So this picture, I said, it's a fence, but you're, you're saying there's a timber, a low timber wall right at the foot of the fence on the other side? Is that what I understand?
I don't believe, uh, as you get further.
Is that right? Oh, the, the wall was buried, the, the timbers were buried?
Yeah. Yeah, and they were buried on, so on my, on my side, I couldn't see the wall, I could just see the fence.
Okay. This picture, which is taken from, uh, David's side, there's, I can only see the fence also. I don't see any timber wall.
I can only get to the east side of the property, um, where the green will have, there were.
Okay.
There's some that's still there.
At the corner, that's been retained.
All right, Barney, you had a question?
One final, I guess, one final question.
No, yeah, go ahead.
When, when you found out that the, uh, height of the wall was greater than the variant, at a variance had allowed. How much of the work had been completed at that point?
So we got, we emailed from David Shipler on a Thursday. We went out, looked at it on Thursday. I, I called Kristen on Friday. Um, at that point, the blocks had been lit. Uh, the cap had been sold.
And what were the dates roughly?
Uh, it was April thirteenth, I think is when David Shipler emailed us. I called my person a message in the fourteenth. Uh, I didn't hear back on that Friday. Called again on Monday, but that's, I guess the cap stones.
And that's when you requested that the application be put in for the May?
Right, that's what I guess. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was planned, especially when I went on Friday, the wall had the cap, there was a different plan was to. To cut it down or not, so I advised, when we finally connected the following weeks. That it needed to be reduced in height to match the plan or the council.
So the work, the work continued and we. And we're just, we're here, okay. How long did it take for this entire project to be done? A week and a half, okay.
Dave, I, I just had, so I'm looking at this, the original, when they did the, when she built her house. And it looks like if you were going to build a wall, retaining wall, you would build it from the ground level up to where the grade of her property is, right? Which is quite a bit higher up here than here. And my question is, if she would have built, if she builds the wall to contour the property. Is, is that where it's at now? Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Start our consultation.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Well, I don't have to speak last since I'm not there. The. To me, there are three distinct issues. And. In terms of the variance itself, of the additional variance of the extra. Sometimes two inches, sometimes ten inches. I'm certainly inclined to approve. I mean, I just don't think that's very material. Mistakes happen. People have to correct them. I've had, for the first, earlier time we went, that we looked at this, I did go to David's property. He does have a very thick bamboo curtain. It is hard to see this. Uh, and the wall's attractive and the landscaping's very nice. And, and, uh, so I, on those grounds, I, I am inclined to support the, the further variance. In terms of the water issues, uh, which is not something which was in the four corners of our consideration before. We were focused on simply the setback issue. And, and it's not clear to me that. The council should take up. Stormwater management issues now, notwithstanding David Shipper, Shipper's concerns. Because if in fact, overall, there's less water flowing out from Kristen's property than there was before. If anything, the situation is improved, the fact that it comes out in some pipes instead of seeping out through the land and, and is not necessarily very important. Uh, overall, the, the, the situation is improved, but in any event. That's not the subject of the variance proceeding, which was the, the wall going back, our permitting the wall to be built much closer to the property. The, the, uh, I, I will though, put a, a thought there, which is, and I, I take it Kristen has offered this, that if it made sense to take out that dirt which is there and put in some rocks instead so that there's no further erosion and there's less soil going down into Alang's backyard. I think that would be an accommodation that would be obvious and easy to undertake. But I'm not supportive of the idea that, that all those weep holes should be closed up. That's just first bad for the wall. The water still has to flow somewhere, uh, and, and I wouldn't think that, um. That again is really the purview of, of inside the four corners of our, of our writ here. So that's my view about the water issue. I remain concerned about the process issue and, and this is very difficult because. You know, I, I've now been on the council for over seven years and, and we hear a lot of variances and generally we, we're very sympathetic. I only know of two that the council said no to, and that had to do with developers that wanted to take down trees. And even then we acquiesced to a branch coming down, just didn't have to take down the whole tree and they can still build the house. So it's not like we sit here trying to be mean spirited, but we take the variance process very seriously. And when people ask for variance for a certain amount, we could, we pay attention to that amount. And the neighbors pay attention to that amount. There are a lot of neighbors that say, I'm okay to this level, but not to some other level. And so it really does bother me deeply that an applicant, knowing that. The variance could not be complied with, did not in the timely way that had been strongly recommended by town staff, come back to us. Notwithstanding concerns of scheduling anything else, frankly, filling out an application for variance is not terribly time-consuming. As I understand in the timeline, you had probably at least a couple of weeks. That's plenty of time and should have been done. I, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to use that as a reason to not prove the variance, for heaven's sakes. That's not the spirit in which I like to operate as a council member. But I just want to record that that to me is not showing proper respect for town officials who are doing their job. Who are trying, and, and Dave is a very well-known and what highly regarded person who handles all of our permitting. And deserves the support and respect from the town. And if he says, I'm willing to let this continue, but get in there and ask for your variance request quickly at the next opportunity. I, as a council member, support Dave and expect that to be done, full stop. There's really no excuse. There just isn't. And, and I don't know what. We were thinking of, but to me, that's just really regrettable. I'm not going to take that to the, there's no reason for me to take that to the point to say no, so I will devote yes. But I just want to record that that's not, this is what has caused some angst here to me, uh, about the process. Why I want to speak very directly about it. And we take these things seriously and respect and have a high degree of confidence in our town staff and what they do. And they work hard to accommodate residents, but if there's a feeling that, yes, you need to come to the council and do so quickly, please. That should have been done. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Yes, Stephanie.
I agree with a lot of what you said, Barney, with basically all of it, except maybe the very, uh, very end conclusion. I, I agree that the, the water issue is a separate issue, but it is certainly something worth considering. I also agree that, um, plugging those outlets does not seem like a. Like it would accomplish anything that either of you want to accomplish, honestly. But that replacing the dirt with stones, um, I do kind of wish I had gone over and could see exactly where the property line was. But suffice to say, if there's dirt on his side of the line, it should be removed and there should be, there should be stones or some kind of better swell placed on the other side of the wall. But my, I have, it, it, maybe it's because I'm a lawyer, I, I have very, very grave concerns about the process here. And I'm, it's, I'm not sure sitting here right now that I can get to yes. Because of that, the entire point of the variance process is to have input from the neighbors who are affected. So that then the council can make an informed decision about what the best accommodation is. And as, I'm new, but you know, I've, I've had variances myself from my own property and our neighbors have as well. And I, I trust what Barney says that we, we generally do grant them and, um. It, it, it puts us in a really difficult position as a council to say, well, since she's built it already. We'll approve it, but it was presented to us as a fait accompli. The only, as I understand it, the only remedy that we have in the code is to, is to tell you, you have to take it down. And, uh, you know, frankly, that's, that's not realistic. Nobody, nobody wants to make a homeowner do that. But that's why this puts us in a really, really difficult position and it's really disappointing. I mean, all of the rest of us who do this in the town and have built and improved our, our homes and have also worked really hard to improve our drainage, um, have gone through the process. And I, I don't even know if Dave remembers, but about ten years ago, when we were renovating, we, on my property at forty-one ten Leland. We had an issue with the height of the fence that was built on top of retaining wall and, um, we stopped work. While we, while we worked it out with, with Dave, rather than continuing and saying, oh, well, you're going to have to approve it because it's already built. It's not okay. And I don't, I don't honestly know where I am on this issue. I'd like to hear what others have to say.
Okay, Stephanie. Um, yeah, I really would like to hear from, um, David Shipley and his, you know, since. You know, can appreciate the other, well, Mr. Lang, who's come, um, as a, you know, neighbor in the area. But I really would like to hear from David Shipley beyond, you know, what he's written here, um, before I can make a decision.
I have one process question for us. Do we have to approve or disapprove this today?
No, if we, this is, if we, I asked the question earlier, if we all felt we had the information we needed to make a decision today. And it seems, for example, what Joy just said about Mr. Shipley.
I agree that process is important and we need to adhere to it. Admonishment of you for not following process is probably appropriate. But in, in the outcome, the way I look at these variances, my, just from the standpoint of, is it, is it better? Or is it worse than it was? And the, she's made an improvement that I think. Contributes to less water being dumped on other people's property. I am concerned about the outfall of those pipes. It is, it is a French drain. In other words, it's just collecting water and dumping it, dumping it. But to plug them is not the solution because that'll cause the wall to fail. So, um, I think. Some stone at the base of the outside of that wall would, would probably keep the erosion down. But what I would, what I am leaning to now is that needs to be a discussion between the applicant and Mr. Shipley. And I would, I would like to see us deferred until after that discussion takes place to see whether or not. That solution would be appropriate.
Okay. So the matter at hand right now, um, as I'm understanding from my colleagues is that. Three of you are, are at a point of wanting some additional information and, and also the concern about the pro, the process that wasn't followed. I, I agree with my colleagues that this is, our, our staff is very professional and, and very accommodating in, in many cases, and this was. Not, uh, the, the way that we would like for, for our community residents to act. With respect to its interaction with staff as well as with neighbors. So with that being said, um. It's, it's unfortunate Mr. Shipley is not here. I don't know, Ron, if there is an option. To, to be able, and I'm just asking the question right now, if there was a, uh, to say. The dirt would need to be removed. River stone or appropriate, you know, would, would need to be in, in its place. And if that is something that is accommodating to Mr. Shipley. Then we, we proceed, or do we have to get that kind of sign off from Mr. Shipley first?
So not knowing exactly where the property line is, I would recommend getting the consent of the neighbor first. Because we certainly can't compel the applicant to do work on the neighbor's property. So i- it, it sounds like the consensus would be to continue this hearing pending input. Regarding the neighbor's attempts to, to reach a resolution, perhaps with the river rock where the dirt is. So the hearing could be continued and at the continued hearing. The applicant and/or neighbor could comment on that issue.
Okay, so what we all have come down to is, I don't think that there's much. I think there's a, potentially a consensus that, um, the, the height isn't the issue here. A couple of inches where we understand that things happen and definitely is an improvement to the property. But where we're all having concern about is, uh, and, and Mr. Shipley is not here, even though neighbors are. We, we can't, I wouldn't want my neighbor speaking for me necessarily. I, I think that would be, it, it's important to hear from him directly. Yeah, and there were two other letters, understood.
And I, and Ron, correct me if I'm misquoting you, but. It, i- is it appropriate to have the two, the home, the, the applicant and Mr. Shipley. Discuss this and come up with an accommodation that's suitable, because that takes care of the issue of going on to another person's property and putting the rock there. So can we defer it until such time as that discussion has taken place? And they have, hopefully we'll, we'll work it out and come back with a joint.
Separate from the granting of this variance with the increased height where we would put in a, a condition that they work together. Is that what you're?
I would just defer any
Just deferring, okay.
Until such time as that discussion's held and then they can come up with an accommodation.
Okay, I don't know where Mr. Shipper is in Maine or in town or with, with his wife or what, if he could make a July twelfth meeting, do, do we have any?
So yeah, perhaps it doesn't need to be said, but the, the council cannot compel that discussion to take place, can just ask the applicant to attempt that discussion.
Back, yes, yes.
And, and we don't know whether Mr. Shipper would want to attend another meeting or if would just want to submit comments. I think he did indicate that he felt his letter was comprehensive and that he didn't need to appear, but given the council's desire for additional information, that mindset may change, or he may be able to submit in writing again after the applicants have a discussion or attempt to have a discussion. But we can't compel a discussion and we can't compel Mr. Shipper to attend another meeting.
So ask the applicant right now whether she would be amenable to the discussion? I mean, is that off, was that something?
Well, I mean, I'm may, may I make a suggestion on how to handle this? I, I take it, it's not necessarily my personal, but I take it there's a consensus to make sure we give David Shipper a chance to comment and see whether, what solution, so I'll take that on board. I think what we can do is say that we don't think we have enough information tonight to resolve this, full stop. Make a request that we'd like to hear further from Mr. Shipper. I think it's a per proper for him to recognize that his solution if I'm gonna, there's a consensus here, is probably not going to be appropriate. Therefore encourage him to think of something else if he would wish to make a presentation. Again, we can't compel it, but we can give him that opportunity.
He could write another letter.
He can write another letter, or it could have a meeting and they come to a mine and they put rocks, whatever that is. So then that would essentially provide the council with additional information on the basis of which we would presumably take a vote next month without necessarily requiring any particular meeting or require, or, or coming to resolution, which in fact, as Ron has observed, we can't require. But we can ask for further information from him in terms of what whether he has a, a further comments to make, since we're not going to, we're not comfortable with the idea of closing all those sweepholes.
So just throwing something in there here, the, the variance in front of us was about the wall height.
Right.
Not about the drainage slash stormwater management issues that, that are experienced in many parts of the town, but in this particular thing. If we as a council are not charged with helping to solve or, or compelling the, the, the neighbors to solve, then is that part of our domain?
Well, I'd like to hear Ron's ball group, I'd like to hear our lawyer respond first.
Sure. So ordinarily, discharge from lot to lot is a neighbor to neighbor issue unless there's a development activity that triggers application of the town's water drainage ordinance. But this case is a little different because you are being asked to consider a variance. So there may be a nexus between the variance you're considering and the impact of stormwater drainage. If the variance you're considering does have an impact on stormwater drainage, then you can consider whether anything should be done with the, the pipes. And the, there are arguments on both sides. As Dave Walton noted, there may be a situation where when water is captured and concentrated at a point, there could be an impact. Or given the presence of the swell and the, the runoff of water through the swell, there may be no impact. But the issue can be considered by you because there's a variance before you. Does that answer the question, Mary Lee?
Yes. Sorry, Stephanie, I was just gonna say, I would, I would think we would be able to consider items that are rationally related to the wall. And this is, so.
Well, the, the, it isn't because it's, it was the dirt that was put on the other side of, of the wall.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
We're talking about the, with the holes in the wall itself, the weak
Oh, the holes in the wall too, yeah.
And, and the height of the wall changed. So there is, there is
Which is probably related to the dirt.
Difference there
Right.
Of, of what happened. So, yeah, I think it's, there's a nexus there for us to look at all of it, but again, I would, I would encourage us to let
Provide another opportunity for Mr. Shipper to come and, and, and say we, okay.
And
He sent this letter, this is, that's, he did have an opportunity to be there, by some person. And I'm, even though I have some issues with his letter, like I think it's not all hundred percent, I, I'm only taking his letter as his issue. I'll, I mean, I'll have that dirt swept away from the other side, would like to talk to a contractor, I did talk to a contractor about the holes and was ready for me not to warn him. And I'm, I'm happy to talk to the shipwreckers about it. If, you know, it just means a lot of things.
Well, he provided two conditions for his support and, and I think we're all what we're all discussing is that for those two conditions, one we understand, which is the removal of the dirt, the other one nobody, at least in this room, understands. So, so that's, that's the part that we're, we're trying to honor his concerns while also trying to solve this manner. Well, I, I'm frankly surprised why your own landscaper then wouldn't come in and say, you know, this, that and the other. I'm sorry? Okay. I see, I see. Okay, I understand. Okay, well, what, again, I'm, I'm hearing from the rest of the councils that we'd like to provide another opportunity for the neighbors to come together, come, come up with a resolution that's amenable to both. And that way, once a further communication, however way it takes place, whether it's in written form or, or in person, then we can, as a council, consider the variance hearing that's in front of us. That's what I'm hearing from my colleagues right now. Okay? So move that we would like the opportunity for you all to get together, if it can be coordinated communication or whatever that, that works. And then July twelfth is our next town council meeting and should there be an agreement and everybody feels good? It looks as though the height shouldn't, shouldn't be as much of a problem. So, okay. Great. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you all. Thank you all. Okay, I don't think I need to bang the gavel on that one right now. Bang, bang the drum, bang, okay. Yeah, we have another variance hearing and then we're going to be
It's like old time, you ought to sit and enjoy it.
Okay. We're going to be talking about East West Highway Crosswalk, Forty Sixth Street and a little bit about state delegation, a little bit about I'm sorry, can't hear you. Yeah, I mean, when we get to it, okay. So let's go to the next variance hearing.
Yeah, that's actually a really exciting development.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Joe.
It's on, Joe.
All right, let's get on to the next one.
So the next case is seventy eleven Hillcrest Place, the Love variance. As stated before, there's a staff report that's been entered into the record. No letters were received in support or opposition. The applicant is reminded that the council has had the opportunity to review your materials in advance. So you don't need to reiterate everything that's in there, but please feel free to address what you'd like. After the applicant's presentation, we'll move to council comments and questions, then we'll move to comments and questions from anyone else in the audience. Then there'll be a time for brief rebuttal, then the council will deliberate and entertain a motion directing me to approve or deny the request. Please note that if the request is approved, it's not final until it's written, and that takes about a week to 10 days. So with that, we'll go to you, Ms. Love.
Wait, wait, wait. Correct the record, there was one.
Yeah, we did receive a phone call earlier today, Ron, from a neighbor who did weigh in on the request. And that was provided to the council and to the applicants.
Okay.
All right, hopefully this will be easier than my husband's job of putting three children under four to bed. So I, I got the, I don't know if I got the short straw or he did, but um, thank you. And hopefully this won't be too long of a conversation. So seventy eleven Hillcrest, our backyard slopes down. And so we have three young children. We'd love to put a retaining wall in the backyard to try and level out the yard. And we have right now a, a pretty giant hole because when we bought the house, there was a garage in the back. It was in a state of disrepair and structurally unsound, so we did have to take that down. So there's essentially a you know, call it twenty by fifteen hole. We're going to put a retaining wall around that square off the yard and it'll go, I think about 12 feet into the yard. And so what we're hoping to do with this variance is in between our yard and Frank's, I see he's on the phone, reduce the distance between the retaining wall and the property line. So Frank and Diane have a fence right on the property line. And essentially they've, they've asked Diane, at least has asked that we use her fence, we don't build a second fence. And so thinking about this for a couple of reasons, one, I need it to be a space that my kids can't slip into. So it, you know, it needs to be a space between the wall and her fence that no children are going to get hurt. The second is, I want to make sure it's not a place that rodents and snakes and other wildlife are going to burrow. And then I really want to make sure it also is not a huge weed pit. So kind of thinking about what's best for us, what's best for the neighborhood, we have an engineer. And so we showed the engineer the space, told him what we were hoping to accomplish. And he's actually changed the material for the side retaining wall so that it can be built up against the fence. We won't touch it. But just up in, in that proximity. And that way we wouldn't have to build our own fence. We could, you know, work with our neighbors on that and it would serve our needs.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions? Barney?
Let me just make sure, and good evening, thanks for joining us. You said you, you will not be building your own fence?
Between I'm sorry, we will build a fence between the alley and our house. And between, there's another neighbor. Well, they have no fence right now between our yards. We'll build a fence there, so there's not a
On the, on the, on the south side of your property where, where your neighbors have that six foot high privacy fence, there you would, you would not build another fence. Is that what I understood?
Yes.
Okay. If I understand, we did receive a, a statement today, right? From your neighbor asking for a six inch clearance between their fence and the, the, the retaining wall, is that right?
That's right, they were
Okay, have you, are you aware of that? And have you had, do you have any comments about that?
We just come today, we've had the neighbors over, and I think really my only concern with six inches is like, I'm gonna have to get out there and put, so the retaining wall on that side is going to be anywhere from like two to three feet. I'm gonna have to put a, you know, a, a piece of wood there and see if I feel comfortable with my kids running around in a backyard with this six inch gap that's potentially three feet deep. I don't know if I'm comfortable with it, and so I think that's probably my first and biggest concern and, and and, and, and so that's, that's, I, you know, I would love to reduce it. We've talked to the engineer, we've talked to the fence company or the, excuse me, wall company. And so we have told them, we want to protect the structural integrity of the fence, because, you know, certainly we don't want to do anything to harm it. And so that's why we've changed the material on the side. And I think they said they can reduce the size of that. Our contractor, Richard Kirby, has been in touch with Diane, I know. I'm not sure if she's talked to Frank. So yes.
In terms of your, the last question I have, in terms of your your contractors, my sense, my, when you put in a, a retaining wall, you obviously have a footing you have to establish underneath the wall. And that footing usually spreads out several inches on either side of the wall proper. Isn't that what they would be planning to do here? They don't plan to have the footings be at all wider than the wall itself, so they can pack it up against the retain, the privacy fence?
I paid much smarter people to figure this one out. So I will tell you I have no idea. And Dave has all of our plans from Richard and our engineer notes. And I don't know, but that may have been why they changed the material so that it could go close to the fence.
I think because of the relatively modest height of the wall.
And how high would the wall be?
It's between two and three feet on the side of the house.
Yeah, so there's a concrete wall that runs along the back that increases the height. But the wall that serves the variance is between
So, so on the opposite corner?
It must taper down as you head up, ahead toward Hillcrest, I guess.
It's, so where the garage was taken out is six feet, or it's whatever the maximum the town allows. I think it's six feet, six inches, something like that.
At the, at the corner with the alley.
At the corner at the alley where the garage was taken out. On the other side, which is, I guess, the south side of the property, there was already land there. That wasn't quite as tall as the garage, but it, it's not a huge hole. So that fence is, or that retaining wall is only in the two to three foot range.
I'm talking about the retaining wall that runs between you and your neighbors on the south side.
Yes, the deepest will be two to three feet, and then it goes up our property about 12 feet until it's non-existent.
Gotcha, so it sort of wedges down, if you will, to, to, okay.
And it's thirteen, it's about thirteen feet from the corner to where it wedges down to nothing.
Okay.
If you could put on your mic.
Because of the low height of that, because it's big construction, timbers, it doesn't need an engineered footer. Right, so you don't need an extensive over there.
Sorry, please, any other questions, Stephanie or Joy? Rich?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a question, Ms. Love, about the, the space between the back fence and the retaining wall. And you mentioned that it's going to be like two feet, so it would be difficult to mow that. I don't know if you maintain your own lawn or if you hire people to do it, but
Just moved in, we will maintain it.
Okay, you could get an electric powered weed whacker between that space back there. Which could certainly do the job. When I moved here, I also had two children under the age of one, so I understand what you're going through there. And kids can get into all kinds of spaces and things like that. I'm just wondering if your contractor presented any other options to you in terms of how to close that space off so that, you know, a young kid couldn't get trapped back behind there.
So I, I think what he wants to do is create a space that nothing touches the fence so that it doesn't deteriorate the fence. And so, you know, as a result, it's either make it small enough so that I'm not worried about them going into a two, three inch space or build another fence. And my husband and I joked about clearing out a two foot space. He's like six, three and a bigger guy, and I'm not sure he'd fit in a two foot space. That might be my job.
So your recourse would then be to build your own fence? If, if, given the, the neighbor's request to decrease the, the offset or, or setback to six inches, you, you would feel that, that, or right now there hasn't been another option laid out by the landscape architect or, or the architect. So the only option would be to have a, a fence of whatever height, is that right?
Yeah, I think if, for example, we're not granted any variance, we have to have a two foot setback, so we would most certainly do a six foot fence off, off the retaining wall so that we don't have any kids going over it. And our thought is if we can though And our thought is if we can though, reduce the distance between the retaining wall and our neighbor's fence to a spot that we're comfortable, a child's not gonna, you know, slip down as they're running over, chasing a ball, something like that. Um, that we wouldn't build a fence. And our neighbors asked us to to not build a fence if we can avoid it. So we just use theirs.
Right, but if if this six, because they're looking for six inches to to have that that separation, what I'm hearing is that you're, you would be forced into putting your own fence.
I think, you know, that's, I mean, that's my concern. I don't know for certain, but yeah, six inches. You know, an eight month old who's learning to crawl and walk can fall in there. So I probably would, just knowing the age of my children.
I believe what you originally said was that you would look to put a wood block, like a wood shell.
Yeah, I want to test it before I spend thousands of dollars on a fence, but I I probably will do it if, uh, if our kids can slip down it.
Okay. Any, any other questions come? Okay, shall we go into? Are there any, is there anyone else on the line that would like to make a comment?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is Frank Pietrantonio, uh, Mary's neighbor. So first of all, thank you for, uh,
On which side are you the neighbor? On which side?
Uh, we're seven zero zero nine. My wife is the one who called with the concern, uh, Diane Mooney. Um, so, uh, I mean, we're first, we're thrilled to have the loves move into the neighborhood and it's outstanding that we have yet a new generation of little kids to be running and and playing in the neighborhood. So we're thrilled about that. And we would certainly want to do whatever it is that we could to make sure that they're safe too, right? And that they have an opportunity to play on their property. I I guess what, I'm a, a little confused. Mary said something about changing the material they were using and I, is that different from the material that was put in the notice of variance, which appears to be wood, or was the wood the change itself?
Frank, wood was the change initially. We had concrete.
Okay.
I think was gonna need that larger footing that the gentleman was talking about. And we, uh, could, we couldn't get close enough to your fence without leaving a pretty big gap.
Right. So. I'm sorry, did somebody have something else?
Oh, this is, I've just been popping the question. So, so the the retaining wall is going to be basically a wood type structure?
Along the side.
Along that side, yeah.
Thirteen feet.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. So it's fine, clarify. Thank you.
So our concern was in speaking with the folks who had helped put up our fence a couple of years ago. Is any wooden structure immediately abutting our wooden fence? To the extent that it would have any possibility of causing some sort of rot between the fences, that was a concern of ours. So what I'm, what I'm hearing Mary say is six inches might be too big a gap. But she's talking about there would be something set back from the fence and I'm just wondering what that actually looks like.
And Frank, this is where Diane was over maybe two days ago. No, two days was the weekend, late last week with Richard. You, you know, we would come up with something where it's not touching the fence and I, I, my understanding is the goal was to have air there. Like, for example, if you wanted us to fill it with uh, rocks that we were talking about with the previous, uh, group, it sounds like there are a lot of abilities of filling space. I'm happy to fill it with rocks or something. We just wanted to make sure that there wasn't pressure on the fence causing it to bow out. Um, but you know, like I just, I don't want a kid to take a wrong step and and twist an ankle or something. And, uh, you've seen my gangly giraffe. She's she's not always the most coordinated kid. So, so just as a, you know, like a small space. You know, maybe smaller than half a foot, but we could certainly, um, if if we get the variance here, like we'll have you and Diane over before we lay the final log.
Okay, to, to, from our perspective, our, our, um, our, I think our thoughts are aligned. I just don't know how the variance process works in terms of, um, like, eh, they grant a variance, if the, if the council were to grant a variance, does the variance automatically then actually give you the right to go right up to the line? Or is there some restriction based on that? So, I mean, I, I think we can work out a distance that makes sense between the two of us or between our families. I'm, I'm pretty confident about that. I just don't know what a granting of a variance locks in right now. So maybe someone like Ron or the council could explain what that, that would mean.
It depends on what is. Sorry. It depends on what is granted. Right now, the council is being asked to grant the site plan that has been proposed, that is attached to the application, but during this meeting, the plans can be amended and an amended plan can be approved by the council. And Ron, we could put a condition, uh, within the the variance that the, the two neighbors need to come to a resolution with respect to this. Uh, how close to the privacy fence it could come or or i- is, does that need to be further defined right now? That, that would likely require a continuance and allow the applicant and the neighbors the opportunity to have a discussion. Cause although the council can grant a variance with conditions, it can't grant a conditional variance. In other words, you can't leave it open for additional findings to be made. You'd have to find tonight that a distance of X feet is appropriate.
Can we grant it such that the two structures won't touch at any point, something like that? And then Frank and Diane and my husband and I can work out the exact distance.
Yeah, that, that's an option or that the separation be at least X inches.
Well, I've offered that. I got, let me ask you one question. If this were continued till July twelfth, how significant an issue is that in terms of your construction plans?
I would cry. We have a giant, giant dirt pile that you can probably see from Virginia in our backyard. Excavation and the neighbors, we look like the Griswolds, like our climbing structures in the front yard, our rocking chairs are in the front yard. We can't build.
You want to get this done? You want to get this done?
We need to get it done. I had this in last month, asked Dave, but my engineer did not get back to us.
Well, okay, that's, that's not our responsibility. The, um, we, we, the reason we normally, we have the, the ordinance we have, which is a two foot setback is precisely because so often with retaining walls, there are issues that arise with the neighbor, neighbors. And by setting it back two feet, you just avoid all those issues. But you made an excellent point, which when I went to look at it, it occurred to me that, you know, there's no reason to put up extra privacy walls that aren't necessary. One privacy wall is completely, should be completely sufficient. So I, as a council member, I'm very supportive of a resolution that allows you to to stay the course of keeping only one privacy wall on that side. Um, but I'm also intuitively sympathetic to even a six inch gap is wide for a small kid. I mean, that obviously could, could go put a leg down there and break it. I mean, that's not trivial. I can see that. But to Ron's point, what we're sort of stuck with is we're not engineers here. Uh, our job is to approve or disapprove a specific variance request based upon information in front of us. So I, I'm willing to take on board that there's ample opportunity for a resolution, uh, which, um, uh, it narrows the gap quite literally as well as figuratively. Uh, I don't know whether there's, there's some tar paper or something that can go down between the, the, the wall and one, you know, the privacy wall on one side and the and then, and the new retaining wall on the other that would separate the wood or whatever. There must be a lot of things that engineers could agree on very quickly. But I don't think we're, it's not our job to make those decisions. Uh, and, and, uh, so I, I'm uncomfortable just having some vague language that we don't really know what it represents. Um, I'm, I'm happy if this is, I don't know whether, how often this is done, David, or whether we can, but is, if we were, I'm just wanting to just brainstorm here, cause I, this hasn't happened before. But if we wanted to accommodate, and I well understand you're wanting to get rid of your, your mount, your mountain there. I, I don't think you can see it from Virginia. That would be very difficult, but I, I take your point.
I feel like you can.
But if they literally got, had to get their engineers together and they came up with a solution, which I imagine they could do in a day. How quickly could we then reconvene to consider that solution?
So it would require a new fifteen day public publication.
We, we'd have to be in special session if we didn't want to wait till July twelfth. That's all I'm thinking about. But that would.
But if we could have worded our approval.
Yeah, if there's a way to.
That it says, you know, so we, the variance is approved. So that the, uh, the retaining wall does not touch or, um,
The space of three inches.
Well, so, something to the effect that it, that it, that it doesn't touch and will not.
Will not impede the structure of the.
Right.
Right. I asked, but that's.
Well, the, the other option is if it ends up, if we say something like, I'm just throwing out three inches or or more. And that the fence, uh, I'm sorry, that the retaining wall does not touch the privacy fence. If it comes back that the engineers are not able to work within those two boundaries, then we have another variance.
Right, so that's.
More than three inches, right? Like if we can't build it that closely, we could push it out and build another fence, worst case scenario, right?
No, yes.
Yeah, and I, I'm just throwing out three inches, cause I, I don't know how your neighbor feels about that either. Um, sir.
Well, would three inches work for Mary and her family? Is that close enough? Is that close the gap enough?
I think so. Um, I think so, cause Frank, they can't touch. So there's going to be some space and so I would hope.
I think we'd, we, we would be comfortable with three inches.
Let's do three inches, gang.
Okay.
So your next project.
So, so Ron, I think.
Measure, maybe better measure the width of your eight months old.
He's a giant. I need to measure my two year old's feet. She's tiny.
Um, so Ron, if, I think what we're saying here is that the, we're, we're uh, the language would say that the, that, that wouldn't be any, um, touching of the privacy fence. It would be, the separation would be at least three inches. Um, and that's the two conditions.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Uh, are we all?
Will some move?
Will someone move if we're all, unless somebody else is?
Don't move.
Second, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it unanimously.
You were right, Mary. It was easier.
Thank you, Frank. Frank is so tired of looking at this pile of dirt.
Well, and we appreciate Frank for coming here to, today too, because if, if it had just been the, the, uh, printout that we had received, we wouldn't have been able to have this discussion. So thank you for, you know, and 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 Mary for being accommodating like this as well.
We, we appreciate Mary and and the love's flexibility. And like I said, we're thrilled to have them in the neighborhood and as next door neighbors. So.
Excellent.
We're looking forward to a, a, a nice relationship going forward. So.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all, everybody.
Thank you. Aye.
Bye. And I'll say good night, Mayor Lang, unless you think you need. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Thank you. Good night. Great. Yeah. I think we're going to take a five minute break to, uh, have a glass of water and whatever else we need. Okay, do we want to continue diving in? Okay. So the first, uh, discussion this evening is East West Highway Crosswalk Safety. This is a wonderful, this is, it's like a good time to be a council member right now in this particular discussion. Because after six years, six years, um, Marnie and I were on the line along with Todd last week with the State Highway Administration where they presented, uh, two options for us, um, to ma- have a red light signal at the East West Highway Crosswalk. As you know, now there's a yellow flashing, um, signal there. And, um, given the Sleaford, uh, pa- Sleaford Underpass, uh, it opened, uh, September. I think it opened up last year, uh, and, uh, obviously wanting to, uh, with, with the purple line and, uh, coming up and everything, we wanted to put the feet to the fire to allow for increased safety. And the two options that were presented, one is a hawk signal, which is very similar to, uh, well, the exact same thing as what's in front of BCC High School. Uh, so that is not an intersection. It's just, uh, the East West High, uh, the East West Highway that continues on. To press the button, the kids go and everybody's happy. Um, the second option though is taking into account edge veil. So there was the idea that, um, if someone depresses the button and it, and it goes to, to red, uh, maybe a, a person who's exiting edge veil would not quite understand that that was going on. And, you know, proceed accordingly, thinking that they have a, an entry into, in, into traffic. So the second option was putting a, a red light signal as well at edge veil. Um, so we had folks on from S H A, we had folks on from the county, um, uh, highway, uh, road safety. And, uh, their expert opinion was to advocate for option B, which is having that additional red light at edge veil. Um, that was only a thirty percent solution. Um, there's obviously more study and design that's necessary to get this done. But their hope is by the second half of twenty twenty four, that red light is going to be installed. Um, and we've, uh, they, they also brought up, because we talked earlier about the Coquelin Run stabilization, running into the long eared bat. Apparently that's also, uh, affecting this project a little bit because, uh, part of option two is, um, uh, having some trees, uh, that are, that are in Zimmerman Park, um, but, but kind of overseeing, uh, East West Highway. Those need to be pared it back a little bit, but because potentially the long eared bat is having that, that area as its habitat too. There's a study that's needed there. So that long.
The town did plant seventy trees last year for those bats.
Yes, there you go.
They've got places to go if we cut a couple of branches off.
It's not our call. It's, it's M D.
But I don't think they have that information. Maybe we could.
I don't know. We, we, we did pass on the, um, extensive, uh, work that's been done in terms of, uh, the surveying of, um, infrastructure that's underneath Zimmerman, because maybe that might be of use to, um, the folk, these folks here. And, uh, it's great. I mean, we thanked everybody profusely. There's a press release that's gone out. Everybody from, uh, Councilmember Fritzen to Delegate Solomon or Tickled Pink. Um, and really if it wasn't for, uh, their, the, the teams from our state delegates and, and county council member, we, we, we wouldn't be where we are. So definitely thankful for that. Do you probably have more comments?
No, just very quickly first, uh, they, they will come back with plans before Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
So there will be a chance for us to see specifically what they intend. And I think as Irene correctly pointed out, there'll be, there are additional elements of the signalization. They know they have to have another signal essentially uphill. A warning that the light's now going red and you'll, if you, maybe if you've driven on, on Beers Mill Road, they do this. They have a, a kind of a hawk crossing a way down the bottom of a hill. Uh, and as you go down that hill, there's a signal that says red light ahead essentially. So they know they have to do something like that as well. So they were thinking about it holistically, which is great. And also they have to do something on Edgeville Road itself. Uh, so that's what's, you know, it'll take some planning. But in any event, they said they would get it done by Thanksgiving. So, and then that case, as Irene said, they could then take only about six months to build it and be ready by middle of twenty twenty four. I think as a practical matter, if it was ready by the beginning of the school year.
That'd be great.
That'd be great. So it's just wonderful. Uh, and, um, all thanks to the delegation and Michael Paylor, who is the head of traffic safety for Montgomery County, was very active. Uh, so it's all good.
Yeah, it's great.
Uh, now we haven't put out a town crier yet, have we?
We, it has been listed, it was listed in last Friday's Town Crier in the, in the weekly.
That's, that's never enough.
Oh, oh, I got you. It'll be.
Weekly update.
Yeah.
If you want anyone to have a prayer of seeing it, in my humble opinion, uh, it needs to be a standalone town crier emphasizing it. And then ask Ann Wild to pick it up and put it in the lister.
There you go.
Uh, so if we could do that, that'd be great. Cause it really is a wonderful thing and we've worked hard for it for years. Uh, where the, we were the driving force behind pulling together that coalition. Uh, and, and, um, I think, um, it's, it'll be good.
Great. Great. Any comments, questions? So the next item is Forty Sixth Street Traffic Proposal, which is included in the packet. So you may recall that a resident who lives on Wall Street. Initially wrote in and. Concerned about when Lot Ten is is converted to a park. You know, what's going to happen considering now there's a do not enter restriction twenty four hours a day. Coming off of Leland and trying to to go on to forty six, which can't be done. That was seconded by a previous town council member, and that's what kind of kicked off the. An engineering report, which was included in your packet. What I thought we would do tonight is just talk about the report if there's any questions or comments about it. The truth is that there's other factors, outside factors into this, first being that W S S C is going to be. Replacing a valve underneath the intersection of Forty Sixth and Leland. Dave, do you have any more information as to the timing of that right now?
Hopefully they put it in August.
Okay.
Those schedules are.
You never know. That's right, right. Okay, so at some point between August and. The time purple line is actually up and running, this valve will be replaced, although they're not connected. I don't want to give that impression. Are they connected? Oh, they are. Okay, I thought it was having to do with the.
Plan shut down related to the purple line.
Okay.
While that may have shut down.
They're going to take care of this. So that's an outstanding item. And then the secondary item is. The Lot Ten plans for, sorry, the Bethesda Market Park Lot Ten plan. So just having a better idea of what's all involved with that, if there's a plan to. Expand Forty Sixth Street entirely, what will happen or with with sidewalks, you know, just just having that information. And thirdly, which I think is extremely important, we've only heard from two people about this. So. We don't know how rest of the residents are going to feel. So I really. Want to until there's more information at hand to come to residents with right now, just focus on the. The engineers report, the the staff report on this and kind of. I guess discuss the option of, you know, information as more information comes in, then we can eventually schedule a town forum. To discuss with our residents and just get their feedback. So. What? Yes, Joy.
I can't recall if during the charrettes, anyone made mention of a sidewalk on that block where lot Lot Ten is. But is that something that we could request, given that they're just going to be breaking up that parcel? At all? I mean, just from a question of safety, I walk that way all the time. Because, you know, I try to do my shopping on foot when I can. And I hate walking in the middle of the street or even on the side of the street. And, you know, those residents who live there, I guess, on that street. You know, that's within the town, they don't have a sidewalk on their side. I'm assuming those are the people who are parking there. Just as a matter of safety, whatever we do, you know, whatever direction traffic ends up going after the parks are done. Is that something that we can request as a town that they put a sidewalk there?
I believe the plans already called for a sidewalk on that western portion. Of Forty Sixth. You know that there's like. Hedges, tall hedges, it's all that would need to be removed and, you know, all of that. But I I personally have seen, and Dave, you're you're shaking your head, like I've seen a sidewalk installed. I don't know much more details than that, though.
Most recent plan, I guess it was presented.
At the shrets. Yeah, yeah. But do you recall, I don't believe there was any further discussion about the. The actual placement of that where it would would necessitate the the. Extension of Forty Sixth Street because it's one of the it's actually more narrow than the other side on Forty Sixth where it where it butts up against Elm Street.
There's plenty of room for a sidewalk to be installed on either side. I don't think there's enough detail now and probably it hasn't been looked at. To figure out whether it's makes sense, whether it's desirable to actually widen the street as part of that development process. Consider so we can.
If we can get that in there. Okay. Any other questions?
I guess the other point is that, you know, I appreciate the engineer's report. And saying, you know, you could do this, or if you take option B, this is what would happen. I can really appreciate the fact that there would be a lot of unforeseen circumstances that. Were we to approve a two way street there now? Could cause other problems. And then two years later, we'd have some other problems to consider once we get into construction there. So. Just as a practical matter. You know, while not to discount the concerns of the residents on Wall Street. I don't think we should make a change now, given the fact that over in the next couple of years, there's going to be major change there. And there may not even be, you know, what's happening with construction elsewhere in Bethesda, where they take up all kinds of space on the street. For construction. That just may, you know, it may be overtaken by the event of the construction, were we to even consider opening that up for two way traffic?
As a former chair of Public Services.
I I I just wanted to kind of highlight two points in the. The engineering consultant's report that that I know were important as we considered. Other kinds of changes to the to the town based on our last traffic study. One is the width of that street. Is that it's narrower, as you as you mentioned, and and if it was built today. It could not be built because it wouldn't meet the fire code. You can't get a fire truck. Through there. And so that that's an issue making it two way. So that that's that was one issue. The other issue was the issue of unintended consequences. And while it may benefit some of the residents getting to their houses there, it may divert traffic. To some other place in the town that. And that was one thing that the the Public Services Committee was just adamant that says, you know, we're going to do stuff, let's not. Impose more traffic. On another part of the community, just because we're trying to reduce it on. Another part. And so and and he's he made both of those points. We just. And and I don't think we have, until we see some further plans. Of what it's actually going to look like with this in the street width, all of that is it's just a little premature. Make any any recommendations ourselves.
Right.
Yeah, I have slightly different thoughts. And I I presume this is actually is really ancient history. This this is one way stop sign, stop one way block even precedes Todd, but so we're talking. You know, pre flood. Anadiluvian. But I presume it's to cut, it's to reduce cut through traffic. Why else do we have? Reductions in in traffic flow in this town is to present cut through traffic. And I I presume, again, I'm presuming that that. That there had been a concern of traffic that would come in on on Leland. Turn right, find its way through the southwest quadrant of town and come out on Bradley or push all the way over to Rosemary that way. And I hear that, I mean, if that's correct. And then obviously, that's that would be accentuated by the blockage from four to six P M on Leland, right? Because then. People at that intersection, oh, the only way I can go is go north right here. But having said that, the what we already know happens, and this actually is your your point in a way, is when that four to six. Blockage goes in effect, people turn left and then they turn right on Willow and they come through this parking lot. And then they find their way out toward the southeast corner of town. And they go out Meadow or they go out one of the side streets, Underwood, whatever they do. So. That makes me actually rather fundamentally question. The value of. Of of having of having that one way for that reason. In other words, if it really is for traffic control, I I'm not sure I'm convinced that that's a legitimate reason. That if in fact you open that up, you might have. You may not increase the cut through traffic. You just have perhaps another way in which the existing cut through traffic finds its way through the town. As a practical matter, if I were driving through the town and I'd come in on Willow and I got to the corner of Willow and Forty Sixth. If I knew that this. Road was no longer one way against me, I think I would probably still, by and large, continue on Willow. And and take the route I have to get out rather than. End up out on Rosemary. But anyway, whatever I would do, I I know I wouldn't go out on Bradley. That would be silly. Why would you go out to Bradley if you're trying to get over to Connecticut during rush hour? You want to stay in the town and come out on on Connecticut. So all all that to say that. I at least am skeptical or questioning why that. The 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 continued efficacy or value of having that one way to begin with. And 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 what that really leads me to say is that. I'm actually quite comfortable considering changing it. Even before the the required closing off of the Lot Ten parking lot, which probably won't happen until twenty twenty eight. In other words, as we all know. They won't do the work on Lot Ten until after they complete the work on Lot Twenty Four. So. Twenty twenty is probably a pretty good guess. So obviously, it's four years away. But where it really takes me is feeling that. This still remains very much a discussion point. And frankly, has to, we really have to try to encourage responses from response from this from the town and particularly this quadrant of the town. After all, it's this quadrant that's inconvenienced. I mean, nobody else in town is inconvenienced from this. So I would really like to hear their views about how much they care. About the trade off of potentially having some additional cut through traffic if this one way restriction were lifted. Versus the the gain inconvenience to them of not having to crawl, you know, snake their way through the Lot Ten parking lot, which is what they do. And and I'm happy to hear what they have to say. And I would like to hear what they have to say. Before we go out all further. If we were to go further with it, I appreciate the issue of not having sidewalks and the narrowness of the street. I'm doubtful. In fact, I can almost for certain say that the park improvement project does not envision or include or would expect to pay for the widening of that street. There's no reason why it should. You know, it's our street. It's up to us if we want to do something with it. But I don't see why anybody was. Anybody else would think they need to contribute to its to its widening. On the other hand, if they put in a sidewalk, that in itself will help the safety and maybe that makes us more comfortable to lane two way. But the other, I thought it was rather intriguing, the idea of having one way. Turn around, you know, that you 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 can go south, but you can't go north. And that also could be a discussion point with residents. But I just feel like. Again, as you correctly said, Irene, we've only heard really from one resident, a very vocal resident, supported by a former council member. Nobody else has raised this, and I would really like to know from that, especially that quadrant, how they think about that trade off between. A desire to restrain cut through traffic if they're concerned about that through their area. Versus the advantage of not having to go through Lot Ten and being able to drive straight home.
Can I make a couple of observations too? I agree that we should go ahead and go through a process to explore this further. I think that we should make it, I would take pains to make it clear when we notify people in that part of the town that this is something that did arise with one of their neighbors that we didn't just. Suey generous come up with. I will note that the current plans for Lot Ten do seem to call for. A shaded walkway on that border. Of on that street, not really a sidewalk the way we would think of it, but a but a path, a side, basically a sidewalk, a place where you can. Walk on that block if you're going shopping at Trader Joe's or something like that. And I would just add then that in addition to the views of neighbors about whether the traffic flow should be reversed or changed to two way. I would, if it's possible, I would love to get the opinion of someone who could who could. Who could opine on how usage of that part of the park, especially with the dog park there and people crossing. From the town to get there to use it, whether increased traffic that could be caused by two way. A two way flow would would maybe end up being. Dangerous for people trying to get to that part of the park.
Yes.
It also raises the issue of. I mean, you raise a very good point about the dog parks. Where are the people going to park if they want to bring their dogs there? Rather than walk and having them walk. So, you know, we have.
New new garage under Lot Twenty Four.
Yeah, well. They're not going to, well, whatever, but it it was very likely. That's right. I was going to say, I mean, we already, it's already permit parking along there now. And it and there's a lot of violators. I I walk it every day and I I purposefully look to see whether they've got a town sticker. Most of them don't have a town sticker. Some of them do. And many times it's pretty full. I mean, there's. Five cars lined up there. So it's just we, I mean, we just need. To think about all of those unintended consequences that might occur.
Right. So. We'll keep considering this and and as more information comes in, we'll we'll keep discussing this. So.
Maybe I I would like to propose an action item, though. I mean, I think we should solicit. Comments from the town and particularly from the quadrant. I I I just don't feel we have a good.
Point of waiting.
Yeah, why not? Is there some reason why we would wait? Why not?
I mean, I I, for one thing, I think most people. Wouldn't don't have enough information about what the difference. What differences it would make in terms of cut through traffic. I mean, I think we we do have some data from the last traffic study we did. Because one of the considerations.
Segment, though, we don't have.
But yeah, but we didn't, that's my, but we didn't do. That sec that second. So, you know, I. I don't know what we're what are we going to ask them? Just open end it? We I I think we need to bound it somehow. So that they so that they can actually. Make a judgment about whether they like it better or not. So I don't and I don't know how we do that. Maybe we. Start to put together some. Some of what we consider to be the trade offs. Somebody needs to do that.
Well, here's one thought, which is, so we aren't trying about is that. When the council is just trying to collect information. We can easily hold what we call a town forum. It's not a public hearing. Public hearings follow a change in order, suggest a change in ordinance. And while the town, we obviously can change our minds. Presumption is that. We are inclined to support this change or we want to get final comment. But if we hold a town forum, we're literally saying, here's an issue in which the town would like to hear your thoughts. And maybe nobody shows up. If nobody shows up, that's that's. That's an indication that, in fact, we haven't, the community, that community doesn't care very much. If a lot of people. Get on camera or come and say they want to speak up because they have this or that concern, then we're going to hear it. I I don't feel like we need to. Have to research a huge amount here. I'm just I'm just trying to get a feeling of what this community thinks about it. Do you see?
So you don't feel as if they'll be, you know. Asking more questions about what is that area going to look like for Lot Ten?
Well, they might. And if we can't answer them, we won't be able to answer them. But on the other hand, if someone says. Well, I'll just give you two bookends, right? Someone says. I I'm I'm more than willing to put up with the inconvenience of how I get to my house because I don't want another car to come through this quadrant, right? The other bookend is. I don't care if some more cars come here. I'm sick and tired of having to drive through a parking lot and risk of, you know, having an accident every day instead of just driving straight down a block.
And if on the third hand, the consensus is we want to wait and see more about what this park is going to look like.
That's fine, too.
That's going to happen. That's fine, too. Or if they say we have the following ten questions, then. Exactly.
I don't see any downside to inviting that public conversation. And it's a way of our testing and making sure that we're not torquing ourselves around. One or two comments when we ought to find out what the center of gravity is at the concern. one or two comments when we ought to find out what the center of gravity is at the concern.
I also.
I get it.
Triggered.
You have to make it town-wide. You would make, you really try to reach the.
Well, we could have a separate letter sent to each of those homes on top of announcing through our regular channels. If, you know, that's a little bit easier to overcome. But I'm more concerned about it could run off the rails. So just as the.
Rosemary.
Well, no, I'm thinking specifically about the traffic study in, like, Leland. And they're going to say, if you're going to, if you're going to come up with a two-way or a reverse, we got, this is the big problem to solve, and it's going to go, like, in another direction entirely and off of this segment. And that's something I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure we, any of us want to get involved with, so. Correct. Come up with it. Well, maybe if it comes up three times by the end of the year. Well, no, because the, the reason that we continued on is because the, as, as much as it's one person, Lot Ten is no longer going to be an option for people to drive through. So even if that segment of the town is perfectly fine going through Lot Ten or Bradley or whatever that they're doing, or going around everything, that's, they may not have thought ahead to say, they may not even know that still there's Bethesda Park. I mean, let's be clear. I can't imagine everybody knows still. So they may not know it's going away.
Let me ask a really stupid question. I'm going to ask it anyway, even though I just asked permission. What, does it generally not work? Do we not do this to say local traffic only? Or like, one way except for?
You can put it there.
I see. I was just wondering.
Yeah, so. Because Walsh, Walsh has that. So when you take a left onto Walsh, it has local traffic, but there's a do-not enter, so, but we can't.
Yeah. Well, but it does have some deterrent. I mean, like, there are, there are people who will follow that. And so it does have some, it's better than nothing, is all I'm saying.
Helicopter sensor.
So what do y'all think? Fall forum, anyway? Fall forum? That's what you do.
I'm happy to get input.
Feels, how about you, too? How do you feel?
I feel real nervousness, but I'm not nervous. Our major concern in this town is getting, getting reaction by.
I'm too new to be nervous, so.
Okay, so you're, you would rather not form.
You know, I live on Leland Street, and I think it should be closed.
See, I live on Leland Street, and I think we should get rid of the one-way. It drives me nuts.
So, so I think, you know, that that is going to be resurrected. But, you know, on the other hand, if you think of, instead of, you know, I mean, maybe as a practical matter, it would work to ask residents, okay, instead of shunting everybody off to the left, half of them could go to the left, half of them could go to the right. You know, I mean, it's, you know, that's, it's a bummer because I can, I know, like, that side of town does happen to have a lot of new, young families. And, you know, we've already addressed the traffic issue over there by the Trader Joe's on a variance within the last year. So, you know, we're going to hear about that. And, you know, that might be an occasion for the town to have, you know, a broader conversation about traffic. There's, there's going to be an impact on traffic when those parks, when the construction gets started because it's just going to divert traffic elsewhere. But, you know, I wouldn't be against having a discussion with people about that.
Let me jump in and just say one thing, that whatever we did to try to ease the burden on working our way through town, whenever we looked at that, it always increased the cut-through traffic. So you make it easier for people to do stuff, to get one way or to get the other. It make, it encourages the cut-through, more cut-through traffic. And if our goal is to not increase cut-through traffic, then we're not talking about expanding access. I just, I just want to raise that as an issue. It's not, we're not, we're not going to decrease cut-through traffic by, by making it easier to cut through.
Understood, understood.
I think what's different is that we do anticipate Lot Ten will be closed. Whatever's going to happen, let's say, even we have a four-year window. Believe it or not, that's not that far away. And so, you know, for the council to be a bit ahead of the curve and solicit public comment, especially from the area that's the most affected, I, my hunch is that, that people are thinking about it, and they know that lot, cutting through Lot Ten will be closed off, that they are going to have some thoughts of, oh, wow, how am I going to get to my house? Because I know that they do not want to wait at the light at Bradley and on Wisconsin, and then turn left on Bradley, and then try to cut across that traffic.
Especially with all the increased housing there.
Yeah, so, so, you know, it really is, it is, it is not. It's early, but it's not insanely early to begin to have conversations with residents about how we're going to deal with it.
I think we should talk.
What about, I mean, what about, how about a compromise here? What about until we get the next iteration of, of parking, of plans? So we can have somewhere, and maybe we can then go out and say, look, here's a plan. We'd also like you to think about the desire to discuss changes in traffic patterns around those parks. So you kind of couple it with informing them about the idea that here's the conceptual plans for the park. And as we've thought about it, there may be other issues that may be involved, such as.
If we solicit the feedback, we're going to this in the fall, for example. That'd be okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it would be the fall.
It'd be in the fall anyways, a practical matter.
Okay, all right. Well, let's work towards something and see where it goes. Uh, we have two more topics. One was, is going to be added about, do you want to do Bethesda Market Park since we?
Sure. No, just briefly. And I've had a chance to brief all of you, but I, for the public record, I wanted to say just a couple of things about the deferral of the June fourteenth meeting and why. And we'd like to see some comments about this, Dave and the reporter, so residents are aware of it. The landscape architects have come back with much more detailed plans than they had previously given back in March, the time of the charrette. And also, they have costed out some additional activities that residents were interested in, such as having a water feature. And done, and I guess it's largely from, more from E Y A, the developer, who has done some more detailed estimations of what individual components would actually cost. And the net is a high-level budget that is materially more than the parks had been budgeted for. The Parks Department would like to wait before going public with the plans until, at a minimum, they've been able to review the costs more carefully, work with the developers and with the town, to see if there are ways to cut those costs. We, who have participated in these conversations, have stressed that from our standpoint, showing discipline and that we're not doing things we don't need to do is a good thing. And we say that as a general principle. It's particularly important if and when we do need to come back and ask for more money that we can demonstrate that we've shown discipline to try to minimize the ask that might be there. But it's also in our mind of view that, that we start from a premise of saying, we want to keep the activities, including the water feature, but we want to see if there's a way to deliver those activities for lower cost. So just to give one example, the plans call for a very large number of light poles. Not clear, all those light poles are really needed for the purpose of security, so maybe we don't need all those light poles. Plans call for very expensive, called cast-in-place seating all along the trails. Well, maybe we just use benches. People will still be able to sit very comfortably. So it doesn't sacrifice the activity, but it provided to handle it more inexpensively. And the reason for asking the approach to be that way is that otherwise, our concern is that they would say, well, that water feature was extra, so let's start by deleting that. No, no, no. That water feature is an activity that we want to see if we can hold on to by finding other ways to cut costs before we double back to have to reduce activity. So we want to be very mindful of a proper principled approach for how we try to, you know, actually work through that discipline. Anyway, net of it is that either next week, either this week or next week, we expect to have a more thorough review of the numbers and to see if there's a top-line way to reduce the cost. And then if we expect there could still be some levels of cost increase, is that collectively seen by all the partners as something we can work with down the road? Or do we have to address it sooner? We don't have an answer to that yet. We have to first find out how big that gap is. Anyway, that was the reason for the delay. We have made the point that it's important for the developers to stay the course and be able to present their site plan. So we've asked them to tell us what they need in terms of park design to be able to submit the site plans. And we ought to certainly still try to work for that goal.
Thank you. The last item is, our next meeting is on July twelfth, and our state delegation will be in attendance. I'm going to ask each of my colleagues during your next committee meetings if you can implore as many of your committee members to come in person. That would be, I'll have a little spread if possible, and that way, a little enticing for. Can't do, can't do that, I don't think. But, yeah, if it's possible, but let's, let's pretend if we don't get as big of a crowd, what are topics that we might want to ask the delegation just from a council perspective? So if you would like to give that some consideration, send the questions to me or just have, you know, topics at hand ready, then that would be very helpful. Good use of their time. Traffic, that's what you. Yes, you're going to be online. Oh, okay. Okay. Or in person. Okay, thank you. No, no. Everyone else is still going to be here. Okay.
I changed my plans to be here.
Oh, goodness.
But I don't have babysitting applications.
Okay.
I think the, to help us, I'm wondering if there's anything from M M L we can get on issues. Are there any issues that were, that the Montgomery County chapter of M M L had pushed for, for this past legislative session, that were not taken up or considered in a way that people thought appropriate? Because then we could raise those ourselves if we cared. I don't know what those issues are, and there could be issues that we don't care about. But maybe there are things that we're not picking up that we would care about. And if so, then obviously it'd be good for us to be able to talk about it.
This is, this is something that they did take up, but that I personally would love to hear a little bit more of a presentation of, which is the marijuana market legislation that they, I think, actually agreed on and passed relatively quickly. I would, I'd like to understand what, where those stores are going and what it's going to mean.
Yeah, at a high level, because I'm happy to send you, I think, Barney, I sent something to you and Todd, but I.
Yeah, I mean, this was before I came on the council.
Might have been, yeah. There's, I'll send to all of you. There was an M M L presentation on their legislative priorities. And there's a whole list of notes that I have about the cannabis legislation and including that municipalities cannot say no. But we don't have any commercial entities to worry about yet. I mean, Corso decided to change, that's a different story, but.
Right.
That would be a new one for the retirement community to have.
I mean. But you, you, you're, you, as a municipality, cannot say no, however, to the, to the sale, but you can say no to a consumption.
To consumption.
And there's so many feet apart, and then there's the sensitive areas of schools and stuff, but it's not, it's actually pretty flexible.
Okay, well, maybe we don't need it.
No, no, I will send, because it might spur questions. So I will send that over to you all on the M M L side of things. And then if you have any questions, just send them on over.
Another one, we, it's still early in the day, but to raise the issue about the sound horn on the south corridor. The purple line.
Purple line, everything, yeah.
We'll brief you at some point, but basically, the M T A promised us that they would give us the rights to have that sound horn only sound when there was actually workers, where actually workers are on the track. And then this management has reneged on that promise. Every time the train goes through the town. Yeah.
Okay, seems like something we should push back on.
Yes, for sure.
Can I bring something real quickly? I know it's late. One of the things, you know, we've been talking about these L E D stop signs, and I think I brought it up once before, maybe before Stephanie was here. I think it would be worthwhile looking to see whether we not, don't light up the do-not-enter sign coming into Leland from four to six with L E D activated. So that, because I think people just, a lot of time, just, you know, they, they, some of them ignore it, but some of them just don't, aren't paying attention because there's a stop sign right before it, and then they just go. They're more worried about the traffic than anything else. So I, I don't know. Maybe it's something for the P S C to look at, but just to, you know, there may be worthwhile benefit to having some L E D flashers on some of the do-not-enter points during rush hour.
You're talking about the one at Leland and Oak there?
No, Leland, Leland and Forty-sixth.
Forty-sixth.
As you come into town off of Wisconsin. Yeah, I just think, it's like you said once before, you know, it may, the statistics do, however, report that they do reduce interactions at these, at the four-way stops. But I think just making people aware, at least some of the townspeople may, may pay attention to it.
Thank you, thank you. Any other last comments? All right. Well, sorry, it went fifteen minutes over, but with that. Yeah. We are joined.